Call meeting in order. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You see this?
Feel free to pull those chairs up if you want.
Yeah, you can support.
Okay, just I'll make sure.
Okay, roll call. Mike Lindsey.
Here.
Donna.
Here.
Cave.
Here.
William Sutton.
Here.
Uh, Mike, you'll be the alternate, the non-voting alternate.
Okay.
Okay, and me, and that, that gives one, two, three, four, five, okay, we have a full four. Okay?
John, Bill wasn't here for the last minute.
Hmm?
Bill wasn't here for the last minute, so we don't have a vote tonight.
Yeah, you go to everything but the minutes. Yeah. Okay. This first, okay? We're gonna open the public hearing, okay? This meeting is being recorded not as official record, but to be used to assist the Secretary in keeping of the minutes. After the notice is read and all correspondence presented, the floor will be open. When called upon, please stand, state your name, your address, and make any comments about this request. Notice is hereby given that the zoning board of appeals at Town of Batavia will hold a public hearing on Monday, November 21st, 2022, at 7:00 PM at Town Hall 8333 West Main Street Road, Town of Batavia, Jesse County, New York, to consider area variance requests from Hex Staniger, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Company LLC for property on Lewiston Road, Town of Batavia, 14020, tax map parcel 8.1-7. We have two correspondents, two written correspondents. The first is from Teresa Marshall, okay? Thank you for the conversation on Friday, but questions at Lewiston Road. There's, there's a variance in the numbers, but we'll go by the tax map, okay? Lewiston Road, which will be discussed on Monday, the 21st, at 7 o'clock. We live at 8271 Lewiston Road, and would like to know what will be behind us. Has the whole field or just what's been sold? Okay? Most of these questions are planning board questions, okay? Has the property been rezoned? That has nothing to do with the zoning board of appeals. We cannot act on it, we cannot talk about it. Okay? Uh, is there a Lewiston Road access? Again, there's nothing to do with the zoning board of appeals. We are very limited. We will agree that we like an 18-foot fence. What type of fence will go around the whole property? Again, that's planning board items. Okay, we don't have anything to do with what kind of fence, the only thing we have is the height of the fence. Okay? Will there be any type of berm, like a tree line built, being built? Again, that is planning board. We have nothing to do with that whatsoever. What studies have been done and are they available to the public? They haven't studied the parking spaces or the height of the fence, so that, again, that has nothing to do with us. Will, will it be done, what will be done to make sure the traffic, the parking won't affect the property? Heard there will be a tractor supply built. Is there a schematic of this development? Yes, it's on record, I believe, I believe there's a drawing of it here at Town Hall. All of that, all of these questions are to the planning board, not the zoning board of appeals. Okay, we're zoning board, the ZPA is very limited as to what we can do and how we can do it. That is the first correspondence. The second one is from Alice Burkle at 8297 Lewiston Road, Batavia, New York, to John T. De La Pena, that is me. In regard to the notice sent to me, a grand request for the Hex, Hex Staniger Company at property at 8287 Lewiston Road. I would just state my strongest objection to the company suggesting to build near my house at 8297 Lewiston Road. The thing of development of more businesses in or around the residential home on Lewiston Road would not only be more of increase to already congested traffic, noise, and more risk of criminal increase as more business build up around this home. Also, the unending sound of security horns going off constantly in the parking lots, in the parking lots behind me. Only to have more businesses and more secure, more security horns going off would not add more noise and stress to the nearby residents. The business surrounding my house already decreased my chance of selling it, and I am ready to do so. Why not purchase the surrounding homes and not have to wonder if there's anything else proposed on the residence? Is the minds, is the mindset business first, tax-paying residence second? Sincerely, Alice Burkle, 8297 Lewiston Road, Town of Batavia. Those are recorded in the records, okay? Would you like to explain the parking lot and the fence?
Yes.
There are two, there are two variances that he's requesting this evening. We're talking about them both, but then when we vote on them, they're separate, they are separate.
Yes. Good evening, Chairman, members of the zoning board of appeals. Shawn Hopkins on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Tony Nancuso, who is the broker representing the current owner of the site. Before we begin, I want to go into a little bit brief background in terms of what's in front of you this evening. Number one, what we're proposing to develop is approximately 5.08 acres of a much larger site. The total assemblage at this particular location is 52.44 acres, and the only portion that we're focusing on this evening is here. The applicant is purchasing approximately seven acres. That includes slightly more than five acres for the proposed tractor supply project, and then there will be a future out parcel. It's important to note that there are currently absolutely no plans formulated for either the out parcel that will be purchased by the applicant, or the remainder of the land, including the large field area located behind the adjacent single-family homes. If and when a specific project is proposed for those parcels, obviously, it will come back in front of the Town of Batavia, be subject to an extensive review, as all projects are, and any issues that people may have with respect to screening, setbacks, et cetera, et cetera, those will be discussed in connection with that future project. What we're here for this evening is simply to, when I view relatively minor matters, in connection with the tractor supply project. This is a copy of the site plan that was included with the site plan application. What it basically shows is a single-story tractor supply building, approximately 24,000 square feet. Does include a garden center and an outdoor storage area, which you can see. We're showing 110 parking spaces, and that's one of the variants. So the first variance is per section 235-2A3 of your zoning code, actually, 235-34E of the zoning code, parking is determined at a rate of five parking spaces per thousand square feet of gross floor area. That would result in connection with this particular project, under strict application of the Town of Batavia zoning code, with the need to provide 120 parking spaces. We're proposing 110 parking spaces. And then the second variance that we're seeking is limited to the outdoor storage area, and pursuant to section 235-2A3 of the zoning code, eight feet is the maximum height permitted. And what we're proposing with respect to that particular area, which you see at all Home Depots, Lowe's, Walmarts, is 16 feet, only for the outdoor storage area. And of course, that is for security reasons. So obviously, the connection, the request for both these variances is governed by the balancing test and the five criteria set forth in New York State Town Law, Section 267B3B. It's elaborated in great detail on the application, but I'll walk through it very briefly. It requires this zoning board of appeals, as is the case with any zoning board of appeals in New York State, to balance the benefits that were received by the applicant, if the requested relief is granted, and weigh those against any resulting harm, any resulting harm or detriments to the surrounding neighborhood. Here, the benefits are quite clear, and they are as follows. Number one, could we provide 10 additional parking spaces? Absolutely. Is there any need to? No. Our preference, of course, would be to not provide 10 additional parking spaces. There's some downsides of that. It would result in additional impermeable surface, it would result potentially in an increase for drainage systems on site, and most importantly, it would result in parking spaces that are simply never utilized. Tractor Supply has over 2,000 locations throughout the United States, and a parking, 110 parking spaces is more than adequate. And if you've visited any of their existing locations, know that unlike some commercial uses, they don't have that particular real busy peak period, especially when people are traveling to work or traveling home from work on a weekday period. So we're completely comfortable with 110 parking spaces. I would note, I live in Amper's, near the University of Buffalo, and the tractor supply that I actually go to that's closest to me, I actually took a look at the plan, it has 77 parking spaces for the exact same size building, and the parking lot has never been full, and I can verify that, I see it all the time. So quite clearly, there are benefits associated with that request. On the other hand, there are absolutely no detriments associated with the deviation of 10 parking spaces. And then secondly, quite simply, the variance for the height of the fence around the storage area, 16 feet versus eight feet, that is entirely for security purposes. Unfortunately, in 2022, we need to make sure that any of the equipment, it can be quite expensive, and merchandise that we store outside is protected, and as I indicated, not uncommon, you see at other tractor supply locations, you see it at Lowe's, Home Depot, Walmart, et cetera, et cetera. So we think the benefits are clear, and on the other hand, we don't believe there are any resulting detriments. However, you are required to consider five criteria. Whether the granting the requested relief will result in undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, or a detriment to nearby properties, and the answer to that is no. Given the nature of these minor variances, given the location of the project site, which is already properly zoned commercial, there are no detriments that would be associated. And again, I would acknowledge, we know we have some residents here, if and when the remainder of the site gets developed or proposed for development, that will have to come back in front of you. Criteria number two is whether or not the applicant can receive the benefits it's seeking by some method other than the requested relief, and the answer to that is no. As I indicated, could we provide 10 additional parking spaces? Absolutely. But that would eliminate the benefits we're seeking, which, why provide excess parking? And then secondly, it is not possible to eliminate the need for the variance for the fence height. We need that to be a secure area of outdoor storage. Variance criteria number three is whether the request is substantial. The key inquiry with respect to that criteria is whether there'll be any resulting harm. The answer is no. Criteria number four is whether the granting the requested relief will result in adverse physical or environmental impacts, and as the chairman indicated in his introductory comments, many of those issues simply don't fall within the jurisdiction of the zoning board of appeals. The planning board and other involved agencies, including the New York State Department of Transportation, will be looking at traffic, drainage, lighting, landscaping, architecture, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. None of that is in front of this board, and that's not meant to be disrespectful. And then the final criteria is whether or not the alleged hardship is self-created, and I would acknowledge for the record, we certainly are aware of the requirements and standards set forth in the C-section of the zoning code, and as such, that criteria in particular probably weighs against us. As you know, Town Law, Section 267B3B states unequivocally, that that cannot be the sole basis for your decisions. So with that being said, we think if you apply the balancing test, the benefits versus the detriments, and then look at the five criteria, four of those criteria clearly weigh in favor of granting the requested relief, and as such, that's what we would ask you to do. With that being said, either myself or Tony would welcome you up here to address any questions you may have. Thank you.
Is there anybody from, uh, from the board? He, the question, Donna? The question, the questions, and anybody from the floor?
So we have the extra acreage from the store towards Route 63.
Right, so we have.
That we could add the extra 10 parking spots.
Right.
To accommodate things that are left in the parking lot, not in the store.
Right.
So we're diminishing the footprint of allowed parking spots for this structure.
Right, so we're diminishing that.
So if you look at our tractor supply, we have here in Batavia, and you look at the outlined building and parking lot, there's a lot of consumed parking areas with merchandise that aren't behind an elevated fence.
Right.
So you want to shrink the parking lot, raise the fence, and you have extra acreage available you don't want to use.
I think.
So I understand, right?
Yeah, I think.
Okay, thank you.
I think, no, I do want to clarify, I think what we do want to do here, sir, is in connection with these new state-of-the-art tractor supplies, the goal is to not have that stuff stored in the parking lot.
So you want to shrink the parking lot.
Designated closed area, and that's what we're doing.
Yeah, so you want to shrink the parking lot, raise the fence, and you're not going to leave any merchandise out in the parking area?
The goal.
So that's what I'm trying to get at.
Right, the goal is to keep as much of the merchandise within the designated outdoor storage area.
But not owned.
Yeah, I don't, I can't speak as to whether there'd be elsewhere, but I know the goal is certainly not to fill up parking spaces with merchandise and result in a parking shortage. And I'm not familiar with that existing location in Batavia, I've driven by it, I think it's on Main Street. I'm not aware of a parking shortage there. And again, 120 spaces for this size tractor supply, that would be the most I've ever heard of. And I think it would probably be the most in New York State, and that's just because your particular parking requirement's five per thousand. Now, there are certain uses where, hey, you need that amount of parking, but for tractor supply, you simply don't.
I, I, I've been driving through tractor supply here in Batavia, driving through just out, the most, most cars you're going to see there is 20.
Right, right. The one, the one near me is on Southwest Boulevard, which is a very busy state highway. Hamburg is 65,000 people, it's got 77 spaces, I've never seen there be more than 35 cars. Not once. So I think we have plenty of parking. With it being acknowledged, even if some of those parking spaces are being taken up by equipment and merchandise, we're not going to have a parking shortfall.
Is there any questions from any, Ron?
I have a question, and it has nothing to do with the fence and that at all. It's a simple explanation from it. How many feet back from Lewiston Road is the front line of your property?
We'll see if I can get you dimensions, sir.
You won't find it on there. There's your guy last week, couldn't he?
I bet you I can. 340.15 feet.
And how much?
Measured by the property line that's adjacent to the church.
Now, how many feet do you have behind it to the thruway?
Behind our site?
Yeah.
To the thruway right of way, keep in mind, that's a right of way, that's probably about 700 feet wide, it's a very wide right of way. We're 200 feet at the shortest distance. At the longest distance, we're probably about 700 feet, meaning from here to here is 700, from here to here is 200. Obviously, that's in a regular-shaped parcel it would be left. Does that answer your question?
No.
Okay, I think it did.
How many, how many feet is the side to the church of your lot?
How many feet? What is the shared, what's the shared common property line?
Yes.
Um, 549. Approximately, slightly less than 1,100 feet? Which is this measurement.
That whole property line is only 1071.
Yeah, that's what I said.
All the way.
Said slightly less than 1,100 feet.
Your stretch on there.
Oh, our stretch, 549.40 for the five acres to be developed.
So it's about 100.
Yeah, and all those dimensions are right on the survey.
Well, you can't read them on what we have.
Okay, but they're, that's why I brought the full-size copy.
Yes, ma'am.
Will it be facing Lewiston Road or facing the new roadway? And where will, I know this doesn't involve the zoning board, the concern might be.
So just to orient everyone, the church is, will be behind, this is of course Route 63, and it'll be facing the internal driveway. Tony, I believe that's correct, right?
I think so, I hear it's implied there, yeah.
Yep.
And where is the out parcel that you own?
I'm going to turn this a little bit. So the out parcel, not that we own yet, but that we will be acquiring, is located here.
And where's that in August 63?
So that's adjacent, yep, and adjacent to a shared portion of the church parcel. And the houses, of course, you can see the footprint of the first house, the houses will be here.
So that it will back up to the thruway, the back of it will be to the thruway?
Um, no, the thruway would be, you have this way.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
So the parcel that is between Route 63 and tractor supply, so that's going to be put up for sale for some others?
It will be available for some other development, yes, likely a commercial use.
That would be part of the planning board, not the zoning board of appeals.
Right, except, with the exception that if it somehow did require relief, it would have to come back.
Yeah, it would have to come back, if there was a problem with the parking spaces or whatever, okay? But that would be a, a, a planning board action, and they're very, very thorough.
Yeah, and if we did have plans, even conceptually of what that would be, we'd disclose it now, we just don't. So it'd be a waste of time.
The fenced-in area, how big is that?
Um, approximately 18,077 square feet, which is four tenths of an acre. An acre being 43, 560.
And that is behind the store.
That is behind the store, you're correct. That's the style around, and then.
Facing the thruway.
Yes. Entirely behind the store.
No, it's not really facing the thruway.
Right, so it's not really facing the thruway.
That's on a weird angle.
Yeah, it's a weird angle. But it is behind the building.
But behind the store.
So by way of orientation, closest house, right, which you know where it is, behind the building. That's a church property. So it's really close to the church property as far as the church property.
So you would see it from the road, it's not like the store is blocking it from Lewiston Road.
Would you, yeah, you would have a, I mean, if you looked that way while you were traveling down Lewiston Road, yes, you would see it. I don't think it would be particularly discernible, but you would see it.
And you said that eight foot wasn't really a big deal, but that is a residential area, it's not a, it's, it's zone commercial, but right now, it's, it's all residential.
Right.
So when you said eight foot isn't a big deal, it is for the people that live in a residential area.
Now, I guess what I meant to say is eight feet is what we're asking for in terms of a variance, and we don't think it's a big deal because it's only for that small portion of the site, and it is 100% for security. And again, visually, I don't think it causes adverse impacts, especially to the residents, given where it is. I mean, this project has been oriented in recognition of the fact that, yes, you know, there are some nearby neighbors, but the whole site, the 50-plus acres, is zone commercial today.
I think our concern is, is that this is the first we're hearing of this, the residents. The town planning board doesn't contact us that they're developing behind our homes. The letter that we got from you last week is the first I knew about this.
All right.
I understand it's been on the 20-year plan. We've, we've always known since Walmart built that it would be, it was zone, rezoned commercial, and that it would be developed, but as far as you telling us that, oh, all these other decisions go to the town planning board, they have not contacted the residents at all, and they won't.
The reason is that this is, this is a very, very preliminary operation. At, at last week's planning board, Ron was at the last week's planning board, and they discussed some of these things, okay? So it, it's, it's going to be a long process, they're, they're going to be selling stuff over here tomorrow. It's going to be a long, long process, but.
We've been here for 30 years, and we know that with this type of development, by the time we get notified, the residents, you're a year too late that the plans are already done. That's why we're here, we just want to make sure things that you don't vote on, that you have no control over, like lighting and traffic, can get addressed, and the town board doesn't contact us.
Well, so here's how I would suggest that I handle this. I've, I've been doing this for 30 years, and I recognize that neighbors, hey, they want to know what's nearby. So before we leave this evening, if there's anyone in the, in the audience that wants to be kept informed, wants a copy of what we submitted, give me your email, give me your email, any addresses, and I'll gladly share it with you. No problem whatsoever.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that, yeah, Ron?
I would like to say you, as the engineer.
I'm the attorney.
Well, whatever, you're a lot smarter and a lot better at making a presentation than the guy that was here last week. And I'm glad, because we're actually figuring out something now.
That has nothing to do with how it's.
I know, I know, I just want him to know, I like these ideas.
Don't send the other guy candy.
So if we have another one, one here, go.
Thank you.
Well, this is the only time he's going to meet the ZPA, because we figure this is evening.
I might just come back to watch some of it.
Can I ask a question as far as the traffic goes? I know that's not part of the zoning. When will that be discussed? Because already, already we have an issue with the traffic, and if there's a hill at Lewiston Road, and then a hill going towards the thruway, and if you try to get out of that area, it is very difficult. So my concern is putting another road that goes into Lewiston Road? So is there a time that the planning board will be discussing it? I know it probably has to go to the DOT, but where do we go, or how do we voice our concern about the traffic?
The planning board meets the first and third Monday of every month.
I was here last week.
Okay, and that, that's when you get all your information.
And I think last week was meant to be a first case informal presentation.
Just to break the ice.
Right, I would note, I've been in front of the plan board in Batavia, I've been in front of my plan, they do do a very thorough job.
Yeah.
And they will be conducting what's known as a coordinated environmental review pursuant to the State Environmental Quarter Review Act. Why that's important to you, that means the New York State Department of Transportation will be commenting on the plans.
Yes, ma'am.
You say that they will be contacting us, but, and they're going to do all this, but what they've done on Park Road, going into Veterans Memorial Highway, there's no turning lanes, going into these stores, it's ridiculous. So you say that.
No, no, what I'm saying is DOT has to review the plans.
They don't live here. They don't sit at the end of their driveway and watch all this chaos go on.
Everybody on the planning board lives in the Town of Batavia.
They don't live on this road.
I do.
Because 40 miles an hour, when they come by my house, I'm the fifth house up from the light, from Applebee's, it's 40 miles an hour, if that light is green, they're doing 60 by the time they hit my house. I'm tired of it.
Again, the planning board meets, planning board meets tomorrow night, and that, that would be way to voice that, that opinion, okay? For us, you know, we understand, okay, and, and there's nothing that we can do about traffic or, or anything.
It's only going to get busier, and I understand that, but things have to be addressed.
I understand that also, and that, this is, this is very, very preliminary, okay? But the preview I talked to, the planning board, and they meet the first and the third Monday every month. They meet at 7:00.
And it's not meant to be dismissive of what you're saying, it's just, this is not the right.
Right, this, we thought this was going to be.
It's just not the right board, that's okay.
And it's fine, because we'll come back.
Sure.
We'll come back, I don't have a problem coming back.
Right, okay.
And addressing this, because it needs to be addressed.
Understandable, understandable. But by law, in, in, okay, by codes, the only thing we can do is, they apply for a variance from, from the town code, and the only thing we can address are those two variances. We're not allowed, we're not legally responsible, we can't do anything of the sort, okay? Just, I, I'm not trying to be, you know.
No, you're, that's fine, I understand.
So you know that, the, the planning board, the planning board, they've got a seeker, it's the State Environmental Resource, they got DOT studies, they've got all sorts of things that, they, they're, they're doing, probably a year from now, I would think, it's going to take.
I'm hopeful, it's good.
But, but.
I don't want to speak for that right now, but yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it is a thorough, it's a thorough.
It's a very thorough, very thorough process that the town, that the town planning board does.
And again, if you'd like information, give me your contact information, we'll share it, we don't have a problem with that.
And you know, I'm not trying to dump it on Kathy Juszczyk, the, the, the planning board chairman, but that's what they do. They, you know, and they, they have a very good board, they have a very thorough board, so. Is there any other questions, any, any comments?
I do know last week they said the earliest starting date would be December 19th, is what we were told last week.
Starting date for what?
That, that's all I, they said the earliest starting date for any type of project would be.
Oh, there's, no, I can guarantee you, there's no construction going to happen this year, I am.
No.
Well, they, they applied for the lead status.
Lead agency.
Thirty days before that's.
Oh, that's so right. So once the town issues a lead agency solicitation letter, all the various involved agencies have 30 days to express any concerns they have with that request, and that's probably what you meant to say, yes.[1784.31]
Okay, then, um, we, I, I'm gonna close, close the public hearing at this time, okay? Nobody else has any questions about this? Okay, then let's go right, right into the, the wording on these variances, okay? There, there are two variances, okay? Let's do it one at a time, one on one at a time. The, the first variance is the, uh, the parking spaces. Okay, can I, can I get a motion that we accept 110 parking spaces? Keith?
Oops, sorry. Go to, go.
Second?
Second.
We, we're without a secretary right now, so, you know, we're gonna have to do the other thing. Okay, oh, we have to have a roll call vote, okay? Mike Lindsey?
Yes.
Don Morrow?
Yes.
Me, yes. Keith Bohheim?
Yes.
William Sutton?
Sutton.
No, okay, one no. Okay, and this will be a, this is being presented as a type 2 seeker. Seeker is the State Environmental Resource, okay? And you're gonna be a type 2 seeker. Can I get a motion that, type 2 seeker?
So.
Donna? Do you have a second?
A second.
Okay, roll call vote. Uh, Mike Lindsey?
Yes.
Donna Morrow?
Yes.
John Dolapena, yes. Keith Bohheim?
Yes.
William Sutton?
No.
You don't want it to be a type 2 seeker, okay?
Five percent for that, that's right.
Okay. Okay, now, very, the second variance is for the height of the fats, okay? They, they, they're up to a 16-foot-high fats. Can I get a motion that we accept that variance?
Motion.
Mike?
Second.
Donna? He roll call vote. Mike Lindsey?
Yes.
Donna Morrow?
Yes.
John Dolapena, yes.
Keith Bohheim?
Yes.
Uh, William Sutton?
No, no 16-foot fats.
Okay, um, and this is also being presented as a type 2 seeker. Okay, can I get a motion as a type 2 seeker? Keith?
Second.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Mike Lindsey?
Yes.
Donna Morrow?
Yes.
John Dolapena, yes.
Yes.
Keith Bohheim, yes. Uh, William Sutton?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm at one.
Okay, that, that concludes that part of, part of our meeting.
Thank you.
I, I, I will, I'll contact Troy Williams tomorrow morning with, with the results. I'll also contact Kathy Jazduski, who is the chairman of the planning board. I'll talk to Kathy tomorrow morning and tell her that we've approved both these variances and that, so I, I, I don't know, are you on her agenda tomorrow night?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, well, but she'll have that information anyway, so it'll be-
So you want to make that clear for the residents, we're not on the planning board agenda tomorrow, so.
Okay.
Everyone have a great Thanksgiving.
Okay, thank you, see you.
Thank you.
No, I would move business, okay? I have everybody's training hours here, okay, and, uh, I'll, I'll pass those out individually after the meeting, okay? We have a secretary now, Kim McCullough, who is the secretary of the planning board. She's, she's gonna assume that duty. She, she filed for it, got it, and she's on vacation. She, she was at the Bahamas for a week, so she's not here tonight, so that's that, and, um-
A week to go to the Bahamas for vacation.
I, yes, and also-
She's not flying out of Buffalo.
Yeah. Also, the other thing is, all the information for training is coming to you on your town website, okay? And according to town policy, I should not be sending email to private individuals.
The town website or the town email?
The town email, no, I, what would you ask for?
You said the training is gonna be on the website.
No.
In the email.
No, it should be in emails, okay? And, um, uh, they instructed me that it's not town procedure to send people stuff other than, than a town email.
Wow, it's not town procedure.
To send, you know, how I was sending, I was sending everybody this notice to the town, and then I was also sending it to you with-
By email?
By your email, you can't do that.
That was pretty convenient.
I thought it was, but, uh-
They're just forcing you into the website so you get all the information.
Yeah, they said that, you know, by doing that, then you're not, um-
I can have my town email on my phone.
Okay, well, here's a bag of these for you.
I have one on my phone also.
We go down, we run to yours, and then you can get everything now. Mike, place that down on the right page.
You can't send the same letters, I sent the-
One more, John.
One more.
One more, John.
Well, yeah, well, yeah, yeah.
It's coming, it's coming.
Well, I saw you have it.
We got two hands for it.
We got two hands.
Hey, uh, we need our, our time papers.
There's time, okay, but we haven't adjourned the meeting yet, because-
Hey, John, I have a question for, will we get a status update on the number of hours?
He's got it tonight.
He's got it right here.
I was asked about that last week, it's under move business tonight, right, Mike?
That's right.
Okay, um, yeah, there's gonna be some, uh, Kim, so I know she's gonna do the payroll stuff, she's gonna take care of it, hand out my truck and all that kind of stuff, but I still gotta sign them anyways, I don't know who, well, her and I had to go have a sit-down and figure out who's doing what and all that kind of stuff, okay? Well, we probably have a secretary.
That's great, keeps a little pressure off you.